This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, so I hereby call to order this June 7th meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board. Before we begin, is there anyone here to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Raise your hand if you're on our Google meetings, you can show your video or speak. Nothing? Okay. We're gonna move forward then, we have only one item on the agenda today, and that is to continue several meetings before seeking to amend a special permit from 2017 for Hill Brewery. As always, I'm gonna give just a little monologue about our process tonight. We're going to hear from the applicant. As always, I know there was presentation or some additional materials that we hadn't seen at the last meeting. Lighting plan, some updates, just give you an opportunity, give you updates on that new information, maybe cover that information now that you've had a chance to see it. At which point, we may have some back and forth discussion about that. Our hearing is still open, so we'll then, once we've discussed it, give the public online and here in the room an opportunity to comment. And then, depending where we're at, we'll move forward with the possibility of discussing our findings and our conditions, if that's what we're... Sound good for everyone? Alright, so it's the applicant, Attorney Lane, it's you.
Thank you. Good evening, members of planning board, members of the public, thank you all very much for having us here again. So, just procedurally, I might... Our sound expert Herb Singleton is coming, however, he's still in transit. So, if all possible, I'd love to be able to cover all of their issues besides sound first, and give Mr. Singleton some facts. My client, Robert Beresins, as I believe is going to remote in. He too, I think he's in a different time zone, and we'll do a little bit of an proper closer experience. But for now, yes. Since the last meeting, I know we... Our engineer updated water cals after a conversation with city engineer, and those were submitted today. Along with updated plan, just reflecting, the only change in the updated plan is reflecting the new water cals.
Should we go over the first? Had anyone joined before it drops? No? You might need to start the recording anyhow, and I'll assist. Apologize, we'll take just a second while we iron out our technical difficulties. You're back? Just confirm, or did...
Right, so Mr. Swanson updated the water cals to take care of concerns that the city engineer Dan Murphy had raised on his review last week. And I could get to the... So... The changes are all here to the drainage ditch. So there's a revised stormwater retention basin in this area here. That's the same area that was proposed last time. There were just revisions done to account, I think, for some recent changes in regulations on that. I can tell you that Mr. Swanson and Mr. Murphy spoke, I believe, yesterday, and Mr. Murphy is aware of the current plans and has indicated his agreement with them.
I saw that.
Specific questions have to say, if there are, Mr. Swanson would be to answer them.
Maybe we'll take a moment then, just so that we're on the topic, just to find out if we do have any specific questions about the letter that came out from Mr. Swanson, and about the revisions.
One today, I've not had a chance to read it.
I'm not sure of one I gave you, there was one on May 5th, and I think was the one that indicated to the...
What changed was the NOAA data, the national... For the rainfall administration, I think that was the data, the confirmation table, so to use the... National... But everything else is...
Right, was that the NOAA?
Yeah, that's what it was, they updated for all of us.
I had no particular issue, does anyone report any questions or issues about it? Alright, I think that the board is okay at this point with it, the public may have some comments here when we get to that point, but we can move on to your next issue.
So, can we just... So, again, there's amended plans now reflecting this retention drainage basin. The expanded parking and gravel area, expanded storage. This is gonna be great once we all get the technical... So, the new plans, again, show all areas that are now owned by 1776 Brewing. Of course, this area where the retention basin is, and where the expanded parking and expanded storage area was previously owned by Birch Family Farm, it has since been deeded over to 1776 Brewing. After the A and R was approved in March. And so, 1776 now owns this entire kind of L-shaped area here. So expanded parking would be here. There are existing storage containers here, they would go only as far as this line next to the drainage basin. I think there was a question last time, I thought we confirmed, but if we haven't, let me just confirm it now, that the expansion would not include more than the double stacked containers that are there. So we could go as far over, I think the existing... Then we can see, the existing extent of the storage containers is up to this line, and then this area here is reserved for expansion as needed.
To the other lines?
To the other line, all the way over to the drainage basin.
And to confirm, you did say doubles?
It would be double stacked.
But to confirm, so I'm sorry, because this was a point of clarification that we were seeking to, is are there two containers now that are double stacked? And that was, what we understood was remaining. It was unclear whether the board is considering double stack the entire line, that was what we were trying to seek clarification.
Tell me that double stack for the extended portion. Right now it is double stacked, so the extended portion, you want to know it's going to be single, if that was what you're asking.
Yeah, it'd be good to just get clarity on it, I think, right now there are... There's two storage units that are stacked.
But now that was our understanding, was that that was...
Well, that was the extent of it, that was my understanding as well, but why don't, is that something that I could by any chance clarify through communication to the city planning, or?
It's not something we can get our answer to tonight, we don't know. Yes, no, maybe?
Yeah, I thought it had been clarified the last meeting, sadly I don't have a note on it, I apologize for that.
Let's, I'm gonna hold that off as a point of interest, and we'll round back to that.
Well, let's, when Mr. Beresins joins us, why don't we ask him one question? Mr. Beresins is on the call now.
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Beresins, if you, I muted you a second ago, but I'm gonna... I mute you. Do you know the answer to that, about how many of the containers are stacked, or how many are single?
I cannot give you any additional information. I can provide the following information for you, and that is, what is the necessity of those stacked containers? You might ask that question, you know, why are they there? The problem that the brewery has is the problem that has evolved over the last few years, where there is a concentration of ownership of can manufacturers. Unfortunately, the Department of Justice allowed there to be some mergers of can manufacturers, and as a result, the remaining can manufacturers have been incredibly demanding with respect to order sizes. And we've been in the situation where we've had to order massive, massive amounts of cans in order to support production. And the can amounts are absolutely staggering, they often are over six months, nine months of anticipated usage. So we, this is unfortunately something that we just don't really have much control over. You can trust me, we don't want more of those containers than is absolutely necessary. They're both expensive, they are difficult to deal with, but it's one of those exigencies that unfortunately we've had to deal with.
Thank you, sir, and I can say too, in previous meetings, that Mr. Eric Beresins performed roughly the same thing, and said that it was, you know, a color-driven supply chain, it confirmed essentially what you said. And so for us as a board, it becomes kind of questionable, we're talking about this extended area from this middle line over to this dash line end, is it a problem that those are additionally double stacked? I personally don't want more.
So, I mean, I thought we talked last meeting about being single stacked in the new area, but it is private property, if that's what Mr. Swanson's business.
I think if that's the direction in the condition discussion, I think we, I would suggest we add something that, about securing them pursuant to any relevant codes. That's been the primary concern about the second layer, is how that second layer is secured to either the bottom stacks or anything else. If you get hurricane and things like that, so I don't know if there's a building code or some kind of methodology to secure them to each other, but that would be my only recommendation, if they're gonna go...
So no higher than two? I don't know either.
And then, it's just secured from any codes, I guess, felt suspicious kind of condition.
What number is that, is that on the...
There are one D?
Alright, so when we come to that, I'm just gonna put a little note to make relevant. Excellent, anything else? Alright, let's move on to the next issue, sir.
Thank you. So, we'll talk more specifically about sound, but of course, as part of the expanded patio in this area, there will additionally be, what my client intends to do is build, according to the recommendations of our sound expert, an enclosure right in this area, that will be closed in on three sides with a shed roof and opening facing towards the brewery. That's where musicians would perform for outdoor kitchens, will be existing at expanded patio. Along with the construction of the band shell, music shed, will be sound damping material on the sides of the building. And as we discussed in more detail, especially once Mr. Singleton is present, the recommendations that that should be reducing sound by 20 decibels. We orient sound towards the building within the enclosure with the sound damping material. So, we can talk more about that, because we did have that demonstration.
I mean, it's a critical issue, I think we all want to discuss, and there's a lot of things to it that we want to discuss, but your expert isn't here, so it's a little bit of breathing room, how about we talk about the light?
That'd be great, so let me... That's a separate plan, and I don't know, Eli, if you can help me... So, Berkshire Design Group created a lighting plan for us, the recommendations, hold on. Alright, so slightly different orientation of the plan, but essentially, we're looking at the same L-shaped property for Hill Brewery out here. Expanded parking here with the storage container and expanded storage area here. So, the recommendation, of course, is four posts with two lamps on each post, 15 feet high. Should provide illumination to the entire parking area, and then should also prevent glare and any over illumination leading into adjacent property. The specs for the light...
Saw that you included those, that was good. This is a little bit of a different layout than I've seen, but there is sort of a key here on this document that we were looking at a second ago, that indicates the falloff, and it's essentially saying it's a pretty rapid falloff on these lights.
Yeah. And the lights as well can come with a, essentially like, a blinder that ensures that it's a rapid falloff. It essentially blocks the light from traveling too far beyond the area just a little bit.
So it's interesting to me here, is that, you know, where the falloff is marked, the last marking is sort of in the center of the parking lot, it doesn't even extend to the outer areas.
Sure, yeah, so it's my concern too, I feel like, I'm wondering, is it enough, like, is it only really...
Never said...
I know, me too, but it only really covers half the parking spot, so there are areas that appear to be dark.
Yeah, so I can only tell you, in a conversation with Jeff Squire, who developed these plans for us, I asked that very question, and he explained, you know, there isn't zero light outside the red perimeter there. And that there would almost certainly be light all, there would be light for the entire parking area. Of course, it's gonna be brightest immediately on the post, but that entire area would be illuminated. The shields on the fixtures themselves would just prevent bright light from escaping beyond that area, and certainly from escaping into the adjacent property beyond the storage.
So, you know, sort of, there is what we can say, is that, well, actually, there's light that's not being tracked on us.
They're not taking it to zero, what you're... They're stopping at point two five.
Right. Okay, and I think that's fair, you know, but in a normal sort of metric map that I'd see, it's properly aligned, it's zero, you know, you can put but across the street or Fort Hill for the neighbors that are over there, are they gonna have this big bright light shine? I know that it's downward facing, and the light seems to indicate that that's not the case, so can I just confirm that you're stating that it's not the case that a giant bright light is gonna shine in the neighbor's windows across?
That is, I am stating that it's not the case that a giant bright light will shine into the...
More so, right? Yeah, I don't think that would happen in the right, I think they're actually quite localized, which is very good.
Anyone have any questions on the phone on your plane?
I want, could we discuss whether there's hours of illumination expected for the lights, would you have any implication of them being turned off when most of the brewery operation is done, so essentially the sort of the retail component?
Yeah, we would, and in fact, you know, that backlot will get used the most during the spring and summer hours. And so I don't even imagine that the lights would need to go off, which is almost towards the end of the operating hours, which is eight o'clock. Of course, they might stay on beyond that to just allow for, I mean, I don't even think that that's an area where staff would be parking. I'm not making a promise representation on that, but I'm just, it's just, it's not currently the way it's used, it's generally used during larger, like an evening, where there is, where folks are coming Friday or Saturday, Sunday. And again, in the warmer months of that, the lights probably wouldn't be necessary until almost eight o'clock, which is the outside limit of the operating time, so...
I think this is a case where the market will likely drive it, because it's an electricity expenditure, and clearly the client won't want it.
But there's no intention that, like, those lights are going to stay on or out in the day.
Peter, may I add something?
Please.
Okay, yeah, well, I want to strengthen your assertions that you've just made. I do not want to, I'm not gonna disagree with them, I want to strengthen them. First of all, in terms of staff, the staff parking is nowhere near that area. The staff parking is really right by the patio, it's at the back of the, at the back of the building. And in fact, for those of you who had a longer term perspective with respect to Fort Hill Brewery, the parking lot is located in the back on the specific request of neighbors, as well as the planning board. And now we're going back almost, almost 10 years. And furthermore, you are 100% correct that the use of that back area for parking is really sort of limited. And I can expect that that would only happen on certain Friday nights and Saturday nights. Sunday is a very quiet kind of day. Sunday is a day when everybody is really relaxing, and there's a relatively modest number of people there, and it tends to be, just like Thursday nights, it tends to be a cheers type of crowd, you know, where everyone knows your name kind of thing. So it is totally consistent with what you've described, Peter. And from our standpoint, clearly, we are interested in minimizing the amount of lights that's there. We don't want to contribute any kind of environmental load using electricity needlessly, you know, having bills that are larger than otherwise. So we are very, very supportive in terms of limiting the hours that are necessary.
Thank you, sir.
So would that mean, would that be something with additional, say, time of night that they would be off, or that, you would say, an hour after business operations close, or?
I would say, I would attach it to something on the following lines of, you know, after the brewery is closed for normal operations or something, give some...
I'm a little bit hesitant, I'm kind of trouble thinking of other businesses that have lights in the parking lots that we've limited hours.
I agree, I was thinking that too, I would do that for Starbucks, or any other operation.
Okay, may I interject, I do have to mention one thing, and that is, there are situations when there might be a sole person, one person, in the brewery carrying on some kind of task, even at one o'clock in the morning. And he or she, for that matter, we have a female brewer as well, may have their car parked again immediately by the patio, they would be nowhere near there. But technically speaking, if there's one person in the brewery, you know, it's operational, much the same way that an office building can be operational if there is a guard present, or a school. You know, so you have to be a bit careful with what you mean by hours of operation.
I should have said business hours, and I would have clarified that these center lights, the lights lighting the new, you know, expanded parking area, which is clearly for larger crowds, versus the area that I'm... Those have been, for a long, I wasn't aware of any issues with that, but I would just, I would offer the board maybe a condition, I consider, as we get there, in a field facing homes across the street or those...
But it's downward facing, and it's not facing them, the lights, and we've got confirmation that they're not going to go in their home to see a photo app that's limiting their light, and I'm not trying to defend it. What causes me concern here specifically is that we don't do that for anyone else, we've got much bigger lights, much bigger parking lots.
I'm just gonna, it's Jeff, but are those situations industrial, residential? That makes this a different situation than Starbucks, it's a whole and no real port.
We didn't have a technical...
That's all I'm asking, is where those situations, where they're really apples to apples.
And I think your question is good, and even so, it doesn't necessarily have to be pressed, that's more really important, is that we're doing the right now. My personal take on this is, and this is just me, but I wouldn't vote in favor of a condition, I understand others would, and I'll go with other peers. Honest.
I agree with you, condition.
You would or not?
Would not.
I would say Mr. Beresins does support it.
Jeff, I thank you for that, I think it's due diligence that we consider, I know, I think in that case, it's just not something that, I think it's just a bit much for us, so... Let's continue, I think that's the lights, is your... Excellent, shall we delve into sound?
I think we do, I mean, if I could just, if we can eliminate everything else, I assume there are no further questions about snow removal plans and special events?
No, I was satisfied with what I saw, anyone else on the board see anything in particular, zones of snow, more well they marked, or the two special events that... Okay.
Great, so then in terms of sound, we started to describe briefly what is happening with, what my clients intend to do in terms of following the recommendations of our sound expert, who's really an expert in noise mitigation, and who is recommending this sound stage and sound damping material. You know, of course, my client is cognizant of the fact that this is very unique property. We have a brewery which seems to be well-liked here in the valley, and is very popular. And of course, it's in an industrial zone, which is rather appropriate for it. An industrial zone, of course, that is immediately bordered by residential zone, and so therein lies a certain amount of tension. My client, however, is fully on board with cooperating as much as possible to mitigate, similar to the conversation we're just having about light, mitigating the amount of sound that might travel off property. And at the same time, I think, similar to the discussion the board just had about...
There's the brewery, there's a little bit of a valley and things back up to Clap Street, if that's correct. So even though there's a lot of foliage in between, it might be that the sound is actually traveling over that, so in that case the sound, the foliage isn't doing anything. But I would say, I didn't look at these, you know, we did model, you know, the conditions that were there, but we didn't say try removing the foliage to see if that changed anything. It's like that was actually there.
One question about that, if I may. And it should have little effect, although there is a large distance, particularly through a Clap Street, of vegetation that's there before there's a field. So, what, October, this fall, when are your hours of playing this music? Can you remind me of that? When do you stop the outdoor music season? Typically, when you do it in October?
Seasonally, I'm pretty sure then it's October. Robert, is there any chance you would be able to confirm that?
Well, it's a function of weather, really. If the weather is nice, people like to sit outside, even if it means sitting outside in a parking lot.
So, we'd ask then, you know, it sounds like it's definitely going to be a situation where the majority of the time there will be a lot of vegetation. As you stated, it won't have a huge effect, but what effect it has, and as you said, you'll be putting more attention to it than you have in the past, specifically controlling volume, that toward the end of the season, when the foliage starts to drop, would be particularly of import to control.
Robert, just make a comment. Again, getting back to the demonstration two weeks ago, so under those conditions, there was actually a downwind condition where the wind was going from the brewery towards Clap Street, but a downwind condition. So that, in terms of longest and sound propagation, that is the worst case, where actually your sound is kind of going over, sort of in a, in a sort of an arc from the source to the receiver. So even if you want to, you know, even were to say that under calm conditions, the foliage does make a difference, it's likely that during the demonstration that we witnessed, that foliage actually did not, was not much of a benefit, did not make much of a difference.
Okay. All right.
Question.
I'm going to get to the public speak soon, I promise. We'll get there, and we'll be able to touch on these issues again. I just.
Yeah, I can respond to this.
I'm not going to ask you a poll right now, I will get to the public speak, I promise. At this point, I want to ask the board if they want to talk about their experiences there, when they're at the sound must start, can I go this way?
Well, I know it wasn't a full bit, I know it wasn't a full. But to be honest with you, it wasn't loud to me at all. Like, it was... Sometimes I had to go like this to hear it. I don't know if my hearing's going to allow that jump, but that was my experience, and I was surprised.
At the noise level, stayed at that level, it'd be fine, but if I got louder now, I could say it would be a problem. And what I witnessed up there the other day was, you get my clap screen, then you could just barely hear, but the car that went by, we were louder. So if they could keep it at that level, I was going to say, you know, stay at that level, it'd be wonderful, but if it gets really loud, louder than that, that it would be a problem.
And that's without the band shell design.
Right.
Band shell, without it.
Even at the max volume?
That would make a shocker, yeah. You know, if you got something behind that, it's easier to hear.
I'll go next. I also, of course, heard very little while I was there. Always only when you turn it up to max volume that on Clap Street I could hear it. The ambient noise, the trucks that's passing and going on were clearly louder. But as Harry said, and as we're all saying, I think, I'm sure we'll be corroborating, you know, the issue here is that's the volume level that was presented. A band with drums, the lower tones could produce more sound, or they can just have more amplification. So it really is something that is critical for me, that we maintain what we saw. I love the idea that there's going to be live music there and that people are entertained, but it is a situation where the impact of quality of light the neighbors could be worsened. I'm loving that you're offering to moderate that. And I think more than anything, that's really the key ingredient, is, you know, being neighborly in this is what's going to make this work. I do think we need to talk about in our conditions, how specifically, you know, they just have some sort of language in there that confirms that the band shell, as I'll call it, will be built and designed as has been represented to us, and that you'll be following through on these things to make sure that, you know, we don't get to a situation where someone's light becomes untenable. So my take overall is that the sound was not too loud as represented. That's the target, I think we've established the target, and we need to find language to meet the target.
May I comment and amplify?
Yeah, hold on, sir, I'm going to let the other two board members finish their thoughts and then we'll go with that.
So I think it's important to note that the site visit was not, was a example of induction in decibels, it was not meant to represent actual conditions at the site. And so, we have received data, we've received video from the residents of the actual sound during actual conditions, not the experiment that we saw on site. So we know that the sound is louder. We heard from the neighbors how loud that it was, they can hear it inside their house, and I don't doubt them for a second. So I know the sound is louder than what we heard this onsite visit. Now, I understand that you weren't intending to say, this is our typical day, where we have a typical band and this is typically sound. You were just trying to say, here's this level, here's 20 decibels less, you can see what the 20 decibels less is. So I don't think anyone should come to the meeting thinking, oh, that's going to be the new sound they're going to give, because that's not what the applicant was submitting. So my concern is, I don't want to have them build a band shell and have it still be so loud that the neighbors who are perceived to have now a one decibel increase on Fort Hill Road are going to have louder music than they've experienced. Not, because I think it's very important to note that what we heard, I would love to say, okay, do it no louder than 90 decibels, because that's what we heard in the field. But you're saying, we don't have a sound ordinance, so we cannot dictate that, because that's what I'm understanding, that's different, please let me know. So my concern is, how can we help Clap Street, which is important, but also not increase the sound of Fort Hill? Is there a way? Now, you've designed this band shell so that it's directly facing the building. Is there a way to rotate it clockwise, three or four degrees, five degrees, so that you're pushing the sound the way through Fort Hill, so you don't have an increase, even if it's same or less, a little bit? Wouldn't that be a better overall improvement for Clap Street and Fort Hill? Maybe you put that, maybe you put that sound barrier still on the wall, so it's not bouncing off the two-story trailers, but it's bouncing back to Fort Hill, but maybe there's a way to still use the building as a barrier, but not increase the sound of Fort Hill residents? I'm very concerned about that. And if there is a way that we can say, okay, based on our field visits, we saw up to 100 decibels of the mats, and we couldn't hear anything on Clap Street, and we couldn't hear anything at Fort Hill, then great. That's, I'm fine with that, but I don't think that was the intent of the site visit, so I'd like some clarification on that.
And before I have you answer that, I just want to hear from you.
Yeah, so I think what's learned that you've been said, more or less captures my thoughts as well. I thought that although audible at both locations, I didn't think it was completely to the point of the nuisance. I live right next to Williston, and I can tell you every time they saw a touchdown on Friday night. So I do kind of have a little bit of empathy towards that public sound and that sound coming out of a public space towards your residences. And then I don't disagree with Chris either, in that was that model representative of real life conditions, I've seen the videos too, and they didn't seem to line up to me. But the one piece that kind of did was when we were, we then circled all back as a group, back to the brewery, and he played it at the, you know, 80-plus decibels, and it did hurt my ears, and I was thinking, as a patient, I would leave if the noise was that loud. And I was sitting where I was sitting at the picnic tables, and I take, you know, we got the Attorney Lane showed the decibels every time. So that was, I think, 80 or 85, and I'm sitting there 20 feet from the artist, like, this is painful. And that was the same 85 that I did hear at both the properties. So that was a little bit, things aren't quite adding up for me personally. But I do agree that if somehow that condition can be maintained, I think we found our middle ground as a group and a community here, because I think we all agreed that was okay. But the disagreement was that that wasn't representative of what the folks have experienced in the past. That's basically how I see the situation, what I gathered from the whole experience and from this whole process.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We got some good feedback then. Attorney Lane, I'll give you an opportunity to respond to any of that, but I also do want to give the public a chance to weigh in on this. Would you prefer to respond now or also hear all kind of views at once?
Sure, why don't we hear?
Okay. Hopefully that's okay with everyone. So I'm going to ask at this point, if there's any public speak about, and it doesn't just have to be about sound, it could be anything that we're talking about on this issue. Anyone that's online or here in the audience can raise your hand if you would like to come up and speak, or if you're on the video, you can either just speak out loud and tell me you want to speak, or show your video and raise your hand. I think I see right over here. Did you raise your hand as well? Okay, I'll hear you next, if that's okay. And I'm sure you remember the drill, name and address of this.
Hi, good evening. My name is Laura Fisher, sixteenth Clap Street, you guys walking into my house. So with regard to the demonstration, which I think there's some confusion happening here. The demonstration was, as explained, just a demonstration of a decrease in decibels, right? This is not a promise that things will be as quiet always. The sound that I experienced, and I was really kind of sad that this is what everyone got together on my property for, was in no way representative of what I'm experiencing living on Clap Street. I am listening to five, six-piece bands with trumpets, saxophones, I hear vocals, guitars. What was presented was something manufactured. Here's someone with an amp, a guitar, a microphone. Is this not the house amp, the house guitar, the house microphone? There seems to be no one managing music at this establishment. We don't hear sound checks before these bands play. So I just, what I really want to get across is, what you guys heard is not what I'm experiencing most of the time. And my concern is that what's being proposed is not going to, or might not, ameliorate the actual problems, right? And I don't think it's an accurate representation to say that nine times out of 10, there's one person with an acoustic guitar performing at this establishment. It's more often something different and something much more expansive. I am happy to hear that what's being proposed would ameliorate some of these higher frequency sound waves, which is what I'm hearing a lot of, vocals, guitars, things like that. But I just really want to get across that what was presented is not an accurate representation in my mind of what's happening there. My neighbors on Fort Hill Road have had issues of noise since the fore I moved into my home. I'm really hesitant to willingly go forward or consent, to the extent my consent matters, to something that's going to possibly make this first for them. And I just want to remind this board that this was, this property or this establishment was initially permitted as a primarily industrial brewery. It has become an outdoor entertainment venue four nights a week. And I think that if an applicant came before you now saying, I want to have outdoor performances totally unlimited four nights a week, I would wonder, you know, what structures would be in place to permit that? And what would this board's inquiry be like in terms of making sure that neighbors would, you know, be protected, especially in a zone like this where it's weak? And this industrial zone, which, you know, I know Attorney Lane said that it's appropriate that this brewery is in an industrial zone, but actually, this brewery, like the retail component of it, or at least some of this required a special permit, right? So this isn't just an industrial use that's, okay, this is what we anticipated. So this has become an outdoor performance venue at a bar, in my opinion. And so what I'd like to see mitigated, and to the extent maybe the experts can speak to this, is the noise that I'm actually concerned about, which is, you know, listening to Leonard Skinner covers at 7:30 at night, and the ones, you know, taking complete liberties with like a 10-minute guitar riff. Not what I heard at the demonstration, and I'm not totally sure how that 20-decibel lowering would impact or affect the kind of music and noise that I'm hearing. So those are sort of, you know, my questions. As for the idea that, you know, the applicant should be held to the same standards as others in the community, I agree with that. We're also at a unique juncture between industrial and residential use. And in fact, I'm about a third of a mile from that industrial zone. I'm R35. And I just want to reinforce the idea that the concept of nuisance legally, which you guys in your own guidance and rules state that you can't permit something that will cause nuisance, the concept of nuisance predates the concept of a noise warning. Something can be a nuisance without having some sort of objective measurement, right? So I know that there's no noise ordinance in town, perhaps that's a failing of the city or a unique one. But what I think is that there's, you know, and I thought that Attorney Lane and I have sort of conceded this point in private conversations, is that there is an issue that this music is, especially when it's aimed at my home, is being amplified at my home essentially, and it really carries. So I guess, I just want to stress that what I heard is not an accurate representation of what it's like to live there and hear this four nights a week, which is the majority of nights of the week. So those are my concerns. I appreciate the idea that there would be increased vigilance over, you know, the sound coming out of the property, but at the end of the day, if I picked up the phone and called Fort Hill Brewery to say, this is too loud, neither Attorney Lane nor Mr. Berzen's are the ones to answer the phone and say, you know, okay, let's exit. So I don't know what it takes for this board to create some sort of, you know, conditions that would, you know, rain a bit a little bit, or put some boundaries around what's happening there, but I really hope that I sort of demonstrated that there is an issue. I appreciate that this will be mitigated, but I do still have remaining questions about how it would mitigate the sound that I'm actually experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we had...
Can I say one more thing? I was looking at the drafted special permit decision, and a few times within a, I can look at which pages, it states that the proposed sound orientation would be at Fort Hill Road. So I just want some clarification about whether this new band shell faces toward Fort Hill Road or the building. And if it's a building, then I think that needs to be clarified.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Jeff, as we get to that point, if you could help us highlight those places, keep an eye out for them.
Hi, Melissa, 17th Fort Hill Road. And I just basically need to reiterate what Laura just stated, that I absolutely agree with the board's opinion and experience, because that was my same experience at the demonstration. If the music was like that, we wouldn't be here today, we wouldn't be concerned. But even just this weekend, there was a band, at least a electric guitar, drums, and a singer inside the building performing, that was louder than the demonstration that we experienced. So it does, it is an issue, and while I appreciate Mr. Berzen saying that he's willing to work with neighbors and be amenable to that, fortunately, our experience with this operation is that even when we have called and tried to deal with it directly and asked them to turn down the music, we've been responded to with a significant amount of hostility and refusal for them to actually decrease the sound or deal with the issue. So while we wish to trust that they will do their best to monitor over the music, I think it's imperative that very specific conditions be put into the special permit that require accountability to that. So the other question I have unrelated to sound was just what the impact to this stormwater plant is, since the owner of the property filled in the gully along the road there, the wash that was built by the DPW last year. It got filled in by the owner, so I don't know how that impacts the stormwater runoff. We know that's always been an issue with...
Thank you for reporting that. Where is that specifically?
Right along Fort Hill Road on the side of...
Before their driveway toward the bike path or beyond the driveway?
From the driveway going up toward the bike path, so the downhill portion there, there was a whole... Yeah, stormwater wash, I'm not using the right word. Yeah, that got completely filled in.
I can't let him smell that.
Do you know if it was filled in, if you witnessed that it was filled in actively or just maybe you guys?
No, it was filled in actively when they were turning down, you know, taking down all the mounds that they had built for the motor cross horse. They were using, I assume, some of that dirt, and with an excavator, or something like that, kind of unaware.
Thank you. Well, that's a good question. Please continue with public speak. Is there anyone else here in the audience that wishes to speak? No one else? Okay.
Sorry, we have, I think, someone.
Is that? Is that, I can see the first name, Rosanna, I can't see the rest.
Yeah, Rosanna, I think you can unmute yourself.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I wanted to say thank you to the brewery for removing...
I have to interrupt, can we have your address, please?
Sure. My name's Rosanna Hayden. I live at 19 Fort Hill Road, so basically directly across the street. I want to thank the brewery for removing the dirt piles, because it looks a lot better. And I do think that that was a neighborly thing to do, so I just wanted to start, because I didn't say that the time before. And I know that involved a loss for, you know, people who wanted to use it, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. I think the whole property looks better, but that's just my opinion. Well, I really appreciate that the brewery would like to build a quality sound shed. I guess what I'm hearing is kind of a very limited approach to sound mitigation, and kind of maybe not a real accounting for psychoacoustics, how sound behaves, and I guess just as somebody who's taken some acoustics of sound, you know, coursework, you're going to be bouncing apparently sound off a metal building, and what I'm wondering is, you know, if you clap in front of a corrugated building, you get a chirp, you get refraction, you get distortion and diffraction of sound, there's echo, there's changes in directions of sound. So I guess I'm just wondering about the wisdom of building a dedicated structure that's going to increase the sound by a decibel even. And I wonder, is a professional going to help design the shed and the stage to minimize distortion? Because you could reduce the sound pressure levels, you could reduce the amplitude by 20 decibels, but if you're increasing distortion and echo and reverberation, the quality of the sound that people hear is going to be really problematic. And kind of wanted to echo what was mentioned about, you know, the need for a qualified, or at least just kind of a somewhat skilled sound person running a soundboard, because you really can't run a PA without someone at a soundboard. It's been kind of casual, so I just want to suggest to the brewery, if, I hope we can be totally just friendly suggestion here, that you probably have to invest in sound engineering, not just sort of the sound study, and then also would like to see a commitment to, you know, kind of managing the sound on a real level, not just sort of a casual level, and that's all I want to say, so I hope that can happen.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Online or here in the room? I don't see anyone. Okay.
When appropriate, I'd like to make a comment.
Please do, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. Oh, is that Mr. Berzens? Oh, I thought it was someone new. Okay, Mr. Berzens, hold on one second. What I'm going to do is, I want to let you, Mr. Berzens, and Attorney Lane kind of respond to this stuff next. Do you want to lead that off, Mr. Berzens?
I'm going to let Robert go.
Okay, please continue.
Yeah, okay. If I may, I'd like to amplify, you know, some of the things that have been said to date by both the residents, our sound expert, and the planning board, but also at the same time, give a little bit of my perspective on the situation with respect to the location. It's my view that this particular section of town is particularly quiet. The neighbors on Fort Hill Road have the benefit of having no development behind their house. They've got a big farm field that only is occupied partially by the brewery on the other side of the house. Clap Street has very few houses around it. The only time Clap Street gets noisy really is when 91, under certain meteorological conditions, starts making a lot of noise. And I've ridden my bicycle on that street, and I've heard 91. Under certain circumstances, it is surprisingly loud. So there is a special challenge with respect to any kind of noise with respect to a quiet area like that. And people have various tolerances and sensitivities to noise. I mean, there are some people who are very much bothered by hearing elementary school children being let out, you know, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. There are some people who get woken up by bird chirping in the morning. So, you know, there is a lot of variety in terms of sensitivities. Now, I will very much concede, very much agree and concede that I have not been as sensitive to this issue of sound as I should have been. So I will give you my promise, my assertion, that I will focus on this much more so in the future. At the same time, I think that our interests are far more parallel than you might think. For those of you who've been to the brewery, I would guess that the median age is something to the effect of 52 or 53. I'm 70 years old myself. I don't like loud music. I don't think our customers, especially adults at that age, they want to talk more than anything else. And our biggest problem has been certain musicians wanting to play more loudly than I would prefer. So I am going to empower the staff and direct the staff at Fort Hill Brewery to be vigilant, particularly with respect to those musicians that are making noise. Because if neighbors from four tenths of a mile are saying, it's too loud, well, you know, then it may be too loud for someone who's 10 feet away, who wants to have a conversation. So that's not in my interest, that's not in anyone's interest. And last set of points is, you know, what were we willing to do? First of all, you know, from the very beginning, you know, Fort Hill Brewery, even though it occupies a piece of land that is, has very nice views of Mount Tom, way back in 2013 or whatever it was, 2012, it was already determined that we would need to have all the activity at the back of the building, in the parking lot areas, as affirmed through 2017. So we've made certain sacrifices already. There are something to the effect of 12 acres that my wife and I now own together, and we only occupy a very small portion of it, but we're still not in a position to be able to face Mount Tom, which I think is very much a shame. As far as the steps that we're willing to take, not only are we more sensitive to the issue, but we will install that sound dampening material on the side of the building. We'll make sure that the band shell is constructed in a manner that's consistent with Herb's advice, and we will collectively ensure that we achieve that 20-decibel reduction in sound, which is very, very substantial, that Herb can talk about in greater length, you know, what will those sound mitigation steps take? Here we had a situation where the musician, maybe he wasn't playing as loud as possible, but he was facing directly to Clap Street, so that would maximize the sound. So I'm very much interested in working together with the town for my enlightened self-interest, where I do not want to... for my enlightened self-interest, where I do not want to discourage, you know, the fifty-two, fifty-three age crowd, which is looking for a Cheers type of environment, you know, where everyone knows your name kind of environment. I do not want to discourage them from coming to Fort Hill Brewery because of some noise that's unacceptable to that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And Attorney Lane, you may want to follow up. But before you go, I see the hand there for Mr. Hayden. I was about to say, I want to ask Mr. Hayden to go next. But Mr. Hayden, I want to ask you just to pause for one second. I want to do one follow-up question. One of the comments we had was that the loud music was sometimes occurring even with the inside music, which we previously approved. You said that you were going to put some more thought to it. Would you be willing to put it to the inside music as well to make sure that, you know, things aren't out of hand there? Maybe occasionally check at the property line and, you know, I don't know what you need to do. But basically, would you put the same attentiveness that you're saying you'll put to the back, to the inside of the building?
Even more so, because to the extent that it's inside and we have glass walls that are reflecting that most of the sound back, I'm that much more sensitive to the sound. And I will make sure that we have sociable levels that are the kinds of levels that are conducive to the kind of environment that I envisioned for Fort Hill Brewery. This is not a discotheque. There's no dancing. There's no twenty-two-year-olds here. They can't afford craft beer. We're talking about an audience that is, that is more mature and more discerning and more demanding with respect to the environments they're willing to frequent.
Thank you, sir. And now, Mr. Hayden, I saw you had a hand raised. As always, please address first.
Yes, John Hayden, nineteen Fort Hill Road. And the, I guess, wanted to address the issue of making the band shell or the sound mitigation to reduce the, to reduce the sound. I understand it would reduce it in one direction, but increase it on the other side by one decibel? I believe that's what it was said. So I'm not sure that that's even worth concentrating on, at least from our end, on the Fort Hill side, because it's the same. And it really does come down to how loud and what type of band is playing in there. If they've got the bass and drums going, it's too loud. And it's been too loud for at least a year. So the discerning patrons that are there, I'm assuming are liking it and it's not hurting their ears because it's ongoing. So it would be good to have some sort of guidelines or something written down or something to deal with the actual practice of managing the sound instead of just a short discussion here at this meeting. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Attorney Lane, the next step for us is going to be to start talking about what those steps are that we're going to take action on. Mr. Burzens just sort of detailed for us the things that he can do, which have been backed up in the documentation you provided. Do you have anything to add before we start that deliberation?
I was actually thinking it would be helpful to have Mr. Singleton address a couple of different issues that just came up. And one is, I wonder, Herb, if you could address Ms. Hayden's concern about if sound is now aimed at the building. And I guess this stuff deals with Mr. Cockshaw race as well. So that if sound is now oriented back towards the building performed within the band shell and then with the sound dampening material, how that affects not just, and I don't know what the scientific distinction would be with sound, as well as what she was talking about, issues of distortion, echo, and reverb. I wonder if you could talk to that. So I'm going to address the members, Councilmember's question about reorienting the band shell, see if that will help. So we did look at sort of minor shifting of the band shell. You know, keep it to the east, keep it to the west, keep it back. Or, but essentially it made no change. Keeping in mind that we're sort of at the limits of the accuracy of the model. So we're kind of, we're sort of at the mercy of the accuracy of the model. So regard to Ms. Hayden's question. So the model, the sound model that we use to analyze this is called SoundPlan. And you can do a Google search for SoundPlan. It's based on an ISO National Standards Organization algorithm for calculating sound over short and long distances. So the algorithm in the model, we are used by professionals all over the world, has been verified and validated and inspected and revised all over the place. It is, within our community, it has reputation of being a very accurate model. It does account for reverberation of structures, diffraction around structures, blocking through structures, reflections, much of the things that she mentioned that she was concerned about. The model does account for that. And the model that we ran does account for those different parameters. So regard to reflections off the building causing issues, we did model that. And that's one of the reasons why we recommended that the inside of the band shell and the side of the barn be lined with an aporting material. And there's a product that I have in mind made by a company called Sound Seal in Agawam. If you've been by a construction site, you may have seen it, sort of like a gray quilted type material that aport sounds so that prevents sound from bouncing up the building. Now, that's one product I have in mind for this. I might look at others as we go forward with the design project. But it is something that the model has, that is incorporated into the model and we have thought about it. And the mitigation that's in the letter that I wrote to design and mitigate that. Regarding to distortion, so the interesting thing about distortion is that distortion actually makes things sound louder. It's a lot of very cheap stereo systems that you can buy. They get away with being able to sound loud by giving you distorted sound. So in a sense, if the sound system that the brewery is going to use or that the band is going to use creates a lot of distortion, that actually means they can run it at a lower level anyways. So, you know, we don't look at distortion specifically in terms of this type of a noise assessment, but distortion isn't really the issue of importance for this particular situation. It's just the overall noise level. And in terms of the reduction from the band shell, you know, we modeled that and determined that twenty dB, that the band shell will give you a twenty decibel reduction. Some of the other comments, Ms. Fisher mentioned that she would be disturbed by trumpet and horn sounds. So again, the shell will dramatically reduce those noises. She also mentioned drums. So again, as I mentioned, the structure will provide reduction for drums. It's not going to be as much of a reduction as it is for the higher frequency, things like voice, guitar, horns, but it will be a much slower reduction. And I think that's what we'll also hear.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anything else, Attorney Lane?
I should mention, with regard to the actual band shell, so again, it doesn't, it actually blocks sound. The band shell does not need to be overly designed, overly sophisticated. You could throw up a little enclosure made up of three-quarter range or half-inch plywood and that will get you your twenty dB reduction. Now, presumably, they're not going to do that because they have different other requirements. They have structural requirements, current requirements, wind loading requirements, and all that. So I'm guessing there'll be something, when the architect designs it, there'll be something more substantial. But it's not that you need something special to do this. No, just, you know, half-inch, three-quarter inch wood would work just fine, acoustically speaking. So it's not that, you know, there's a lot of effort, a lot of discipline work that has gone to making it acoustically effective. It really all the design work is going to be meeting all the other requirements that a structure like that's going to meet.
I'm glad you mentioned that. That's good to know. So you're saying they don't have to put in expensive foams and?
Well, we did, again, I did recommend lining the inside of the shell with a aporting material. Again, to reduce some of that reverberation that Ms. Hayden was talking about.
So that does need to go in?
Yeah, but I mean, but in terms of, you know, it doesn't have to be this, if you go online, look up sound reduction materials, there's obviously exotic materials, exotic structures that you can buy. You don't actually need that for this application. No, you wouldn't, if, you know, if the owner doesn't mind having to rebuild it after every windstorm comes through. Again, you just build it out, build a shack out of plywood and it's going to work just fine.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I have had personal experience with those sound like it's a sound plan.
So I think at this point, it sounds like the board was ready to deliberate?
I think, yeah, unless there's anything else you want to add. And we will try to be inclusive here. But, you know, for me personally, we need to come up with some conditions. We've got some that we're drafted here. I'm looking at number two in the conditions. And I need to go through all the conditions, but just so that we can get through this piece of the corporation, which is really kind of the last thing that's yet standing. You know, you said here, two A, outdoor live, or two, outdoor live music shall take place at the site only under the following conditions. A, all outdoor music shall be limited to three to seven P M. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Could I just re-point C? The permit allows actually two to eight.
Two to eight?
The twenty seventeen permit is two to eight.
I think I heard something about there being a reduction from eight o'clock to seven o'clock at some point a week or two ago. Did that?
What's printed in the draft is taken from there, previously submitted. I don't disagree with Attorney Lane that five seventeen permitted a lot of twelve P M. So it's a, that's a discussion piece.
So what's the intent? Are you going to seven or are you going to eight?
Robert, do you want to address this? So the permit does allow two to eight P M. I don't know strategically, though, things are wrapping up at seven. You might be muted, Robert, but we're not being.
Can you hear?
Robert, you're.
Okay, the music typically ends at seven, and I think on Sundays it ends at five even. But the original, the original special permit back in two thousand seventeen does encompass the two to eight P M. timeframe. And I can understand where the three to seven was coming from, because that's the, that's the hours that we currently have. Those are the hours we anticipate having in the, in the future. But I would not want to restrict those hours beyond what was in the special permit, just on principle.
So you're asking for eight o'clock?
I'm asking that we maintain the right to go to eight o'clock, but that we have no current, nor present, nor future intention at the present time to expand to that. This is an afternoon venue. I need to emphasize that. This is a venue that is used by children. We have situations where we literally have three generations at a time. We do not want to have our employees work long hours because the people who work in the taproom are the same ones who work in the offices. So it is not our intention to try to expand this at all.
So it's likely to go to seven, but it could go to eight. So the board needs to just discuss that right now? Are we okay with leaving it the way it was in the special permit? I personally don't have a problem with that. That one hour is neither here nor there. That is already, and this is my opinion. You know, I do want Saturday managed. We already talked about that. But just in terms of the time you're going in, only four days a week, only, it would be what, three to eight? That's five hours. That's for a venue that we're considering approving here. That's a very limited amount of time in my opinion, anyways.
I mean, just your twenty seventeen was in the special permit and Robert seems to think he's going to be able to manage this, so.
We'll have to go into that specifically, but three to eight, anyone have a problem?
It was two to eight, two to eight, and then twenty seventeen.
Okay, good. So that would be six hours, two to eight o'clock, because we're trying to match the existing permit. He says he'll hit three to seven, but what we're doing is matching the existing.
And if I could just mention the practicality of the situation. The practicality of the situation is no band is really interested in playing more than two, two and a half hours anyway.
Any thoughts? Okay, so I think we're okay with the two to eight change in that. I'm going to look at the next one now. Mark that, two to eight. You say all outdoor music must be performed within a noise mitigation shed substantially similar to the submitted design submitted in exhibit one dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Three walls and a roof measuring approximately sixteen by twenty wide and ten feet tall with sound dampening materials on the brewery. And should we state the orientation of it?
And should we state that there are sound dampening materials inside the shell as well?
Yeah, I think that's great. So I'd like to add, and maybe you can help me wordsmith this, that with sound dampening materials on the brewery and inside the shed and that the orientation of the shed should be facing the brewery. Hayden, I'm sorry, Hayden, go.
I was just thought it might be redundant since it's substantially similar to submitted design.
Oh, because it's already shown.
It's already referencing submitted design, so if it's included in submitted designs, you're going to be redundant.
I love that, and I hate redundancy, so if it includes them.
I have to repress you. That's my job. At this point, if I would, I would just keep, I would just add it, I would just add it in. You know, it's going to be easier for any future reference to not have to pick for the plan, but I think it's just cross-checking. It is a little bit complicated, but it's going to be easier for anyone in the future. And so it would just be adding on to the end just to point people in the direction of what is expected would be sound dampening materials on the brewery and inside the shed, the orientation for the building.
Yep.
It's just, it's just pulling out the specifics.
Yeah, listen to the actual design, because there is no actual design submitted for it yet. Because that's a concept, so the next, the next item actually talks about the final. Let's hit that now. And that's two, I don't know why it suddenly goes from A to B to one, two, three, Jeff. So I think there's a slight error. It should be a C, I think. So I'm going to relabel it, just C here.
Unless it's a part of the.
Oh, it's part of the shed? Oh, it's part of the shed, so B indent it further one. Okay, never mind. I see what you're saying. So that goes on as a part of that to say the final shed design plan shall be submitted to the board for review at a public meeting. Yeah, potentially identify any changes to the planned designs. And what's being said there is that you'd be coming back. Now, we have already granted with these conditions a special permit, you'd be able to proceed. But you'd have to come back, in order to meet that special permit, you'd need to come back to us and just demonstrate the design and show it off. I don't, at that point, we wouldn't have any ability to, because it's already been granted, to say no, because there's no criteria on whether that's a potential change. Jeff, thoughts on that?
Generally, the idea is that, and I think as I stated, the concept that has been presented, presumably it's some kind of designer, whether it's an architect or designer is going to design this. And it just would be a normal opportunity for the board to see something like that, or it's allowed to be built.
Before it's allowed to be built, does that mean we could say no?
Well, allowed to be built, I guess I was referencing the building permit that would be necessary. We're assuming it's building permit, as I think Mr. Singleton talked about, like wind, wind code, how it's going to be secured, those are things that would be covered through a building permit. I did make a note, final shed design plan and sound mitigation material for the building shall be submitted to the board. I think as Mr. Singleton was talking about, that there appear to be options for.
What was that?
I'm proposing to add.
Oh, yeah, start adding there.
Just because it would be useful for the board to understand what was chosen for the materials.
Could you restate that now?
Sure. So the small i becomes the final shed design plan and sound mitigation materials for the building, shall be submitted to the board for review of because it sounded like there was options for each.
Oh, you say and sound mitigation materials. Does a public meeting like this require notice?
As written, it does not require notice. So the board has done this in various ways. This is formidable. There could be notice. We have required that in certain circumstances.
Who pays for it? City or the Apple?
Also handled a variety of different ways, so it gets postcard mail, postcard mailing to the city. Typically absorbed by cops.
So the thought here then is that you'll come before us, show us a design that is largely and substantially the kind of thing we're expecting based on what's presented here. And it's really just an effort to put it into a public record. And that's it, essentially.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. We did a little, I guess, rectangle on it.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that's reasonable. We still leave the question of whether or not we wanted to notice or not. You know, expense and that's putting it on the taxpayers, the city to pay it, but I hesitate there. Are you willing to do this? Is this a condition you have an issue with?
I'm not sure. I see why it would need to be noticed in these circumstances since we're just submitting architect plans. And it sounds like all that need to happen is the board confirm that the plans are consistent. Mr. Singleton's recommendations and our recommendations.
I mean, I think you make a fair point. We have. I mean, I think you make a fair point. We have no authority to say anything about what's coming to us. Why not just mention it right in here that it simply has to be presented to the planning department? You have to receive it instead of the planning board, but that's an issue. What is it? Thoughts? I mean, I'm just nosy, so I'd like to see it. But if it's not something that the board needs to see, it's something that the planning department can permit it's part of the, part of the, you know, that it's aligned with our current standing of the plan. So, I mean, Jeff, if we're rewarded that that had to be presented to the planning department, therefore putting it into public record in the same way. How do you feel that varies?
Professionally speaking, I prefer that it come to the board. I think it was Mr. Singleton kind of just previewed that he was being honest that there's this could be built in an inexpensive and quick way. That's not what is expected right now, but that could be an option and that you would see that. There was discussion about lining it with foam or not lining it with foam. So I think the decree to which this is built to do the path it was designed for, I think, kind of lies with the board to see that. It might be a fresh moment.
You want us to be aware of it because if it comes to you directly, you'll be aware of it and you want to kind of be able to share the information that whatever comes to the public. So there's the answer, Trin Lane, as to why it might be necessary. For me, that's a tough one that for I think I have to, you know, get off the fence on it. Here's my opinion. I'll hear all of yours. I think you should go to the planning department because and I'm nosy too, but I can't do anything about it. And therefore, to make them go through the extra hurdle for something that there's absolutely no ability to do anything about one way or the other, it just seems extremely stupid. What are your thoughts?
So what if it did come to the planning board and we had questions or disagreed with it? Would we have any? So why would it come to us? I think it should go to the. I agree.
Same. I think we're here to agree on the performance standards that film. Kind of make sure that's in congruence with.
So so maybe we can come at this slightly a different way and catalyze this. And let me just continue reading here what you had. And we just read part one of B. I'll read two. A building permission be required in the electrical permit prior to any installation of the sound shed. It's really straight forward and three. Prior to the completion of the band show, the applicant is restricted to solo amplified musicians. Mr. Singleton, can I buy a second? Can you think of any language that we might be able to use to stipulate a standard for the design of the of the band show?
So it's and looking at noise barriers, it's. They're putting me on the spot.
We're taking it a different way. Instead of saying you're going to come back and show, we're just going to prestate, we're expecting this. And that solves the problem, I think, in a better way. Well, we need some help here because you're the expert on sound. Help us set a bar.
Yeah, it's just.
Well, I'll jump in if I could, because the bar has been set. You know, it's not, this isn't, I'm not trying to make this feel like rocket science, but it's three walls and a roof measuring approximately sixteen by twenty, a foot tall with sound dampening materials on brewer and not. I I just wanted to, you know, working with Eli at the draft position, there was something with caution to you guys. I think submitting it to the planning department fine. I guess what I would prefer to have is if it is not what is expected, that we need a mechanism to get it to this board. That because you are the board, have dealt with this for over a year.
Of what?
Well, so if it is not what is, so I don't want to be playing a role, you know, this since that anything's bound to happen. But if if all of a sudden this plan that gets submitted is just nowhere near what was discussed in that memo, this board needs to have that discussion. I am not the person who can kind of dig deeper. And so so the so it's kind of this, those second sentences, they'll identify any changes to the design plans. There's there's wording. We do this often, which is if there are substantial changes to the plans that so if I'm reviewing it or Eli's reviewing it, we're uncomfortable with some aspect of it, then you did bring it to us.
To review whether or not.
That works. So we're sending it. It's just that if it's determined by the planning department to not, you know, or to. Yeah, if it's essentially different than what was submitted, then it'll come to the board.
I apologize for putting you on the spot, Mr. Singleton. I think we found a solution that's going to work for us. Don't go far.
If I may add, if I may add, from a brewery standpoint, we are happy to submit the plans to the to the board. It's in the spirit of cooperation, we're happy to do that.
Thank you. So in your end, agree that you just read prior to completion of the bench on the oh, the prior to some eventual applicant is restricted to solo amplified musicians. So that's we are at our site visit with this single person. Person with a single amp.
Yeah. Until this mitigation is in place, do you agree that you will not go for the full band? It'll be a single musician only? And that you will implement the management of sound that you have already agreed to?
Right. So, Robert, I think that's really for you to answer. So the the idea is that until the band shell is ultimately approved and built, outside performance will be limited to something along the lines of Mark Nomad from the demonstration, single, a solo performer.
The only thing is, we have some commitments in terms of bands that are going to be playing. And the, you know, they're they're scheduled to play. And I would certainly be willing to limit the music volumes to those that are the equivalent of what we had on the demonstration until we can get this built.
So if I understand correctly, you're saying this won't work. You have commitments. What about asking those committed musicians to play acoustic?
No, well, I just said that we'd keep the volume down to two levels comparable to that of the of the musician that was playing.
That's okay. I mean, obviously, you know, we're building trust here. That's what we want. This is the level. You know, this was a way, this line of saying it's only going to be one person was a way until the mitigation is in place of assuring. And, you know, so so there's the point of taking your word, and there's also making sure by the conditions, we have to meet somewhere in the middle on that, I think. Thoughts?
Question, when is the when is the structure plans to be built?
Well, I would think that that would be a number of weeks. From the standpoint of construction, I'm not personally aware of what kind of permitting we need through the town. That's that's building a structure like this is quite straightforward. Once you have all the approvals from the town.
Once you have the approval, it's a it's a matter of within a month that's built?
Yes, it's it doesn't take long. I mean, I personally, my father built a house that I reside in. And he did. He built the entire house in seven months. So it's it's not difficult. It's not time consuming. Once you have the relevant approvals from the town of East Hampton. And gentlemen, I do not, ladies and gentlemen, I do not have a perspective on what that process would be.
Well, and I would just add, you know, part of the purpose of this condition is to make sure this happens in a timely manner. And I appreciate what Subverses is saying about our approval process of building permit submitted. If it's not complete, it could take some time. The building, the building for stress thirty days issued permit. I don't think that they push that, that it will issue the permit if evidence there. Well, part of the reason for the condition was the notion that an architect, it's presumed to be designed by an architect based on all of the discussions. And that anecdotally architects are super busy. You need to get a proposal. You need to understand the costs. You need to sign a contract. Then they start their work on an actual design and you're and that is an unknown period of time before there's even a building permit submitted. So that was why this, you know, this could be the entire summer.
This is an incentive.
I'm trying to, I appreciate that the applicant wants to articulate a quicker timeline, but this by my read of this, this was, this could take some time with or without the town approval process, the actual design process. So on the vein.
I'm more optimistic than that. I'm more optimistic than that in the sense that the the original brewery building, which people seem to be pleased with in terms of its appearance and image and all that, it doesn't look industrial. I could retain that same architect who happens to be my former brother in law. And he will be doing everything and anything possible to expedite the the process.
Okay, thanks for that. So in the in the interim, then if there's commitments and we have, then we can't just commit it to one person with an app. Should we can we commit it to a certain decimal range? But then until the shell is structured, how do we enforce that? That's a question.
That was going to ask. I was going to ask you. Santa said that they're really law working and the neighbors complain and they say call somebody. How are you going to enforce on that? We don't have, we don't have a noise ordinance. Who's to say what law and what is that law? I mean, probably.
Yeah, and frankly, even Jeff's item here, that it's only going to be one, could be violated. There's no, you know.
And the reason why it was proposed that way is because it actually would be enforceable if that if and I understand what Mr. Brooks said about pre-existing permit committed like dates with fans, but one person is going to be walking here to go and determine that there was a violation of that rather than a death pool level.
All right.
Then a morbid.
I think, I think we need, no, no, I think we need to come to decision on this. I'll start my opinion and hear you all. I think we need to hold the line on this one, Mr. Burson. I think that because there's no sound mitigation in place, you'll do the best you can to keep sound down. I truly believe, I truly believe your your word is good on that. But I think we need to hold the line to to make it so that only a solo amplified musician has its labels here, plays until that band shows up. I'm going to go to Ken next.
Can we change that to an acoustic band? That is to say, a husband, wife, you know.
I'm totally to switch to acoustic. Would you like, is everyone?
That was actually going to be my.
I actually prefer that too.
I mean, you 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 never know. I mean, I might get an email tomorrow morning from Carly Simon and James Taylor. Have a free concert and I hate to say the town of East Hampton doesn't allow it.
So. Also true. So will wordsmith this to say prior to, excuse me, prior to completion of the band shell, the applicant is restricted to solo amplified musicians or acoustic bands?
Yes, I mean, like folk rock.
Non-amplified? What's the right word?
I would really hesitate to agree and to have my client agree to acoustic without amplification. I can't imagine any musician who's going to want to perform that way.
I don't think.
Without amplification. But acoustic instruments amplified.
Yes, but it's a different.
It's a whole difference.
Yeah, it's similar to what we saw.
Are we all in agreement? So we're just saying it restricted to solo amplified musicians or acoustic bands? That work?
That that's reasonable.
Okay, is that something you think, Mr. Burson, that that would work for you? I hear you, Brozen. I can't hear you, so. We'll move on. We might have lost him. Okay, so that's all the conditions that we have predefined. Is there any other conditions for sound that the board thinks are required?
So, Robert, is that all the accessibility that it'll be solo, the condition would be solo amplified or acoustic things?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There's one one more, if I may. And so it is not on the draft. And so it was something that occurred to me as we were talking tonight. And so it came up because the city, there is, I want people to be aware that there has been at least a discussion, the city having a noise ordinance that will, if it ever comes into existence, could potentially regulate live music across the board at all venues that play live music. So in that vein, you know, I think we need to acknowledge that somehow in here. And the the way that I would propose this to the board right now is that we're going through, we've been through a lot together as a group over a long time here to get to this point. But I do think we need to acknowledge that if there were a noise ordinance that was openly approved.
Supersede.
It should supersede this because and the way that I have drafted the language quickly here was that if this permit, especially with regard to the live music, shall not supersede any future city of East Hampton noise ordinance, which regulates live music. I mean, I think if they, if the city comes up with a noise ordinance that's regulating the noise levels of live music, then I think this permit needs to be, or this operation that the brewery needs to be complying with that.
And probably whoever makes that ordinance will also, and it probably will be both. But it will say something along the lines of all preexisting, you know, noise issues must comply with it. So I'm sure it'll be both ways written in. But can you, the way you worded that, Eli, we'll add that in is what two, four or something?
I mean, it's a new discussion piece, but I, you know, there is a chance that their city never comes up with a noise ordinance. But on the same side, on the other hand, there could be. And I think we just don't want to lose that opportunity. Because there was some confusion about this. So I don't think we are intending to say that this is permanent without regard to if the city undertakes a proper you know, noise ordinance that's going to regulate all businesses with especially outdoor live repayment, that this would be included. This would need to comply with that. Should it ever.
So I think we all agree and that language works. So we'll have you put that in as two fourths. Anyone else specific to sound? Yeah, I think we've covered it, which at this point, I'd like to read the findings on the draft and all the other conditions so that we can go through them and decide whether or not we're going to vote.
May I ask one question? May I ask one question with respect to submission of the plans? In order to try to accomplish this on a very quick basis, will that be necessary to publish this a month in advance and the usual notice kinds of requirements? Or can this, is that waived? Because I don't want to find myself in a situation where we're ready tomorrow, but it can only be reviewed two months from now because of because of the way that your system works.
Well, I think we said that you're going to be delivering those plans to the planning department. If they find a problem, they'll bring it to us to see if it warrants a substantial change. So that could do things if that happens. But other than that, just bringing them to the planning department, I don't think there's a timeline in that.
Correct. Yes, and in the event that the. Sorry, that's hard. In the event that there was some kind of discrepancy, it's a matter of a week or two. They get for the board out of this, be a public meeting. So it's not, it's not a full on application timeline.
I'm confident that we can work with the planning department. That's fine.
Jamie, I something just kind of sparked my thought for two A. Just an idea maybe and the thing that kind of find the middle ground.
Two to eight P M. Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, so this would just be one of the shared structures built and we're full on operations as and Mr. Burson will have somebody, you know, keeping a better watch or maybe have built into their job position to manage this a little bit better. But I'm still concerned that potentially it would creep back to existing conditions that are allowed, right? Notably allowed by some of the public. So what if, this is just a thought, what if Thursday and Sunday were also just restricted to amplified acoustic? And Friday and Saturday could be a band. I mean, those are typically the louder days of the week anyway. So again, I know we kind of had that band plate restriction on a temporary basis, but what if we split the difference? So we could still bring those types of acts that Mr. Burson's wants at his venue. But you just gotta pick in years to make it a Friday and Saturday and then Thursday, which is a work night for most of us and Sunday as well. Kind of a quieter type of day in, in our.
Mr. Burson, there's a suggestion that on your Thursdays and your Sundays. That you only, uh, do single. At amplified or acoustic, whatever the word and wants.
Okay, that won't work for a couple of reasons. Okay, um, first of all, well, let's talk about the reality. The reality is that Thursdays and Sundays are already. Tend to be those kinds of quieter kinds of performances. Um, and that is, you know, go to the brewery on a Thursday and you'll see what I mean. Go to the brewery on a Sunday and you'll see that. That's exactly the kind of environment that we are stimulating. Having said that, we also use Thursdays as a testing ground for bands that are appearing on Friday nights and Saturday nights. We don't necessarily want to expose a larger audience on Fridays and Saturdays. To a, to a band that we, that we don't like. So we really need the flexibility of genre.
What about Sunday?
On all night. Reality, the situation is that Thursdays and Fridays and Sundays tend to be quiet.
I mean, that would seem to reinforce that it'd be okay to limit the bands on that. I kind of see your point, however, that you need to test bands on Thursday. But that leaves me with sort of Sunday seems that, that it might be okay for that to happen.
Um, right.
Do you disagree?
Uh, now we're, now we're, I, I think we're getting into a little bit of, you know. Limiting artistic freedom, okay? I mean. Is a jazz singer going to be acceptable on Sunday? Is a folk singer? What if a folk singer, you know, plays, you know, you know? Uh, uh, some, you know, louder song. I mean, I, I think we're, we're getting a little bit too.
What we really want is, is a method to just protect the interests of, of the people nearby and, and to make it so that you can be successful in your endeavors at the same time. I don't think that it was a bad suggestion, but. I mean. Do you want it? Do you let it go or what do you stand?
I'm willing to let it go. I'm just trying to. I don't know. I, I oddly enough, I've had two different people come to me unprovoked and tell me how much they love. That work of brewery and how much they love going. I'll sit outside. So, but I also understand the restrictions, I wouldn't necessarily want to. So I, I, I understand wanting to find. And I don't see why you'd not. We, we just want to be, be su- wider music. And we want to try a band, it's always on Thursdays, but it's always on Sundays and, and you know. So I'd be okay with reducing it to Monday.
Yeah. Leave it? Think about Sunday, I think it's what we're talking about.
I'd say leave it. Leave it what?
I'm torn. I want more protections. I wonder if maybe there's another angle, but I also say leave it. It's not, we could call a vote. Okay. All right. Any other thoughts on the sound? Go ahead, Ken.
Just for clarity. Um. There were two things that were mentioned that are not so far, like, cause we're moving, they're not represented in a condition, which means that. The board is not taking a position on them, which is. Any kind of written policy for managing, for managing the music internally or. Any requirement that they manage music. It's been spoken of the intense. But I just want to be clear for the board and for members of the public that that's not currently, well, incorporated into this in any way.
I like specifically, just the first one is the most important. It's something that it's been offered, they'll be managing in some sort of language in their book. Or staff, or that, well, and how we enforce it. Go ahead. That we can leave. You're right, because it's after the permit. Something along the lines of just putting a statement. Um, Ford Hill Brewery will manage decimal levels to be below. I knew. It's not. It has to be without a noise. And I can't think of what works with some chariots. One once. One twice. Okay. I think we're, we're going to be. But, um, there's a lot of trust here and, you know, this is in the public record and honestly, I, I believe you, Mr. Burson's, uh, and, you know, we're hoping that. It does get well managed and it isn't, uh, an unbearable situation. Um, but I think that we've all, you know, made agreements here and the expectation is that they're going to be that. I'm gonna move forward now and read our findings. Starting on the draft on page nine. Uh, which are essentially running through our twelve point seven nine, A through, uh, I. Uh, L, excuse me. Uh, I'm gonna summarize the beginning part, uh, because there's a lot of material here and a lot of reading. Uh, and the twelve point seven nine, um. Ordinance is in our ordinance, you'll go online. Uh, conformance with the provision of all the ordinance of the city of East Hampton. Uh, the planning board finds that the application was in conformance of all provisions of the ordinance, city of East Hampton and MGL chapter forty A. The planning board issued the special permit stormwater permit pursuant to East Hampton's ordinances in the business operation, the valid license. From the East Hampton Licensing Board, A, B, C, C and Board of Health. At any point anyone sees anything sincere that they think are inappropriate or expelling, please.
I would add, sorry, I'm gonna do this a few times. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I would add, based on the discussion that the approval for outdoor live music shall comply with any future. Um, noise ordinance that, that regulates live music. I think I'm taking the discussion and putting it into the financial.
That's the place to put it. Okay, I'm good with that. Everyone good with that? Okay. B, protection of city amenities and abiding properties to minimize, uh, any detrimental consequences. There's some background noise there, I don't know what that is. Uh, the planning board finds that the. Music was allowed in the two thousand seventeen special permit because the proposal includes the expansion of patio music performed or heard by patrons. And because of butters raised numerous concerns about negative impacts from the live music, it gave rise to consideration of mitigation options. The planning board finds that after the applicant hired a sound engineer and proposed noise mitigation measures, including the construction of a bandshell design. The planting of a five-foot wide landscape area and lining of the walls of the brewery with sound mitigation materials. It will allow outdoor music to occur that will not be offensive to a butters. The board finds that the applicant shall implement the items in accordance with the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two memo prepared by Cross Spectrum Acoustics. The planning board includes a condition that only solo musicians will play. Uh. Uh, okay, I'm gonna continue reading. Until which time the bandshell is constructed, along with the other mitigation measures, then the final design plans for the bandshell should be admitted to the board for review at the public meeting. Let's go backwards. The last statement shall be submitted to the planning department, and then the one before it. We modified that, uh, to say solo and acoustic, so we need to make the same modification.
Just for consistency, Verge, he said bandshed originally, bandshed is one of the belows, bandshell.
Yeah, I just searched for shell everywhere and changed it to shed.
Or one.
I don't know which one, right?
I think there's.
It's an R S, yeah. Yeah, I'm not gonna argue that one. Any thoughts? Okay, good. So pick one, please. Uh, C, minimization of traffic and safety impacts. The planning board finds that the proposal seeks to formalize increased parking on the property and that no concerns regarding the traffic or safety of the additional cars entering or exiting the site were identified. Additionally, the board finds that the number of special events was limited by the applicant's two. And that a sufficient system of directing traffic flow to overflow parking safely during special events was provided. Go ahead.
Uh, it brought to my attention that, uh, there should be a couple of reflectors down at the bottom of the entrance that have. What's happening is people don't know how to get in and out of there and they're going to turn around and skip the driveways because they'll go back.
Right at the entrance.
There should be two reflectors at the end of the driveway or the sides of the booth or the entrance or something like that, where people will know where the hell we're going.
Uh, Peter, uh, excuse me, Attorney Lane, thoughts?
Uh, I'm so sorry, I'm closely taking notes here. Uh, could that just get repeated?
Well, there's an indication that there, we are missing or need two reflector signs at the bottom of the driveway. I actually have some distant memory of early permits that that was like. That there was something, a part of that.
That would require me.
Was never got enforced.
It's within the two thousand seventeen permit. So I think. And fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see there. Uh, hold on, hold on, let me see what he's got.
It, it doesn't, I, you know.
Yeah, I remember it.
It's very, it just says that there's something to, um, reflectors, it's all at the base of the driveway. I don't think I say why, but I think that's.
We just need to notify you that. It's expected that you'll be in compliance with the original permit and that's something you need to be aware of.
Of course.
So you need to.
Good?
It's being done, yeah.
I mean, that, right now they're out of compliance, so.
Well, they haven't been out of compliance for six years, so.
And that's part of why we're here today, so. Uh, and can I confirm that that's understood?
Uh, you, that is understood, it's also, uh, condition number three under the twenty seventeen. Uh, permit, so, and I believe that there's gonna be language in this that all other conditions of the twenty seventeen permit must be applied, so of course.
Has to. Thank you, Perry. That's a very good point. Um. While we're talking about the traffic component two, there was also something that might be stormwater, I'm not sure. Let's do it. Oh, let's do it when we get there. Okay, uh, or was I D? Adequacy of the methods of disposal and sewage and refuse, uh, the planning board finds the plants for the stormwater retention basins are adequate for a fifty-year storm and that overflow stormwater. Would surcharge, I'm pretty sure, the parking area and does not affect the city's stormwater infrastructure.
So this has been revised, I'm sorry, this was one of the items that was changed and then it was submission from a junior.
Can you read for Ken?
Uh. It. It would be such that it's a hundred-year storm, so it was updated to achieve. The hundred-year storm and that it, the, the basin was resized to hold all the water anticipated from outside storms. This was the, this was the issue that the city engineer flagged, that. Um, it wasn't designed to be a hundred-year storm and was designed to overflow into the parking lot, so the basin. The depth was increased after all the water for that storm, so. Simple words, but it would be as adequate for a hundred-year storm and that. No, uh, and that the basin was, is sufficiently sized to, um. Uh, hold that one. Okay, yeah, so it's just a, I didn't catch that earlier.
Those changes sound good with me. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, that brings us to E, adequate means of protecting wetlands, watersheds and aquifers. The planning board finds that this finding is not applicable. F, mitigation of adverse impacts on the city's resources, including the effect on water supply distribution. Uh, board finds that this finding is not. G, provisions for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles. Uh, the planning board finds that the proposal increases the number of parking spaces by approximately one hundred and sixteen spaces, which exceeds the interim required for the use under section ten point one of the zoning ordinance. The proposal includes the installation of additional, addition. Addition of additional. Parking lot, lighting sufficient for safe use by patrons after dark. The proposal has demonstrated an adequate system of managing overflow parking during special events and the special events occur only twice per year. So I just made that the additional clause. Uh, H, the applicant's efforts to, uh, integrate the development into the existing landscape. Uh, the planning board finds that the construction of additional parking is substantially setback from the road and is compatible with the overall use of the property. Additionally, the expanded patio is compatible with the existing use of the brewery property. I, minimization of the area over which existing vegetation is to be removed. Planning board finds that the area used for the construction of additional parking does not contain any significant vegetation. J, the consistency of the development with respect to setback, area placement, parking, architectural style and landscape. The planning board finds that the hundred and sixteen additional parking spaces in two separate parking areas are well set back from the street and is not highly visible. The planning board finds the new lighting is designed for that illumination of adjacent, uh, adjacent parcels. Choose there. K, I think this is the one we want to modify. Adequacy of the measures to prevent pollution of surface groundwater to minimize erosion and sedimentation. The planning board finds that the proposed stormwater infrastructure improvements will meet requirements these Hampton's stormwater ordinance. And the submitted plans provide for future maintenance. So I'm not sure we're all thinking the same thing, but I think we are. There was a presentation here that some of the swell got filled in, is that?
That's correct. I mean, I think part of this would be that they need to maintain. For all, she said that it's sitting on swells, is that correct?
I don't.
I hope the. I'm pretty sure what's being discussed is the. Swell within the city's easement.
It is within the city's easement, but it is what I, what I heard from the resident, she witnessed that spill.
I absolutely cannot address this tonight. I, I don't have any information.
I think it would, from my. Position, it was identified early on that the applicant took some dirt from the jumps and put it in the city's right-of-way. Um, we were, he was alerted to that and seemed to stop. Um. I believe that if the city engineer or the N B W director feel like it is intimidating what used to be happening there, that they will approve it. Um, the area is, I think as Mr. Dargis mentioned, it's kind of. Flatter section from the, from the bike path to where the field is. The swell where it's actually improved with rock, uh, the, the stone is closer to the driveway and that was not built in. Okay, that's part of what I observed.
Okay.
So I think the city, it's in the city's right-of-way, so the city believes that it's intimidating the. Flow, they'll take, go back in. It, it was not until approximately into the mailbox, it was up, top of the hill.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that seems to resolve that issue.
Yeah.
Okay. So then L, adequacy of the methods to ensure that deals will not constitute a nuisance. Planning board, the proposal includes sound mitigation, including the construction of a bandshell. Installation of sound mitigation materials on the brewery and vegetation to prevent outdoor music producing excessive noise. Those are our findings. I'm now going to look at our conditions. In approving this special permit, the planning board includes the following conditions. One, all exterior site improvements shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with the plans prepared by Holmberg and Howe and Gary R. Swanson dated May eleventh, twenty twenty-two. And accompanying narrative and calculations submitted by engineer Swanson dated June seventh, twenty, including A. Yeah, was that twenty twenty or twenty twenty-two? Yes, we'll modify that to say twenty twenty. Now, A, prior to any construction parking drainage features shown on the approved plans, the survey monuments should be placed on the corners of the eastern property lines. Of the parcel one thirty-one dash twenty-three dot one to mark the newly delineated lot lines. The location of these markers shall be observed by the city engineer to confirm they are located as shown on the approved planings.
Can I just add, just a note, so. The submitted survey information. Shows in the legend that there will be monuments set at these corners, so it's not an additional requirement, but this is just to help us all. Understand that this is going to be, going to be the maximum extent of the new parking and drainage areas. So that we're all kind of clear moving forward. Um, that was something that wasn't clear in the last permit is, you know, where was the edge of the parking? So this is not, it has to be an additional requirement, but it does say in the plan that those mines will be set. And so we're just asking them to be set before the construction starts, so that we all know where, how far this parking lot can go.
That helps. I needed context, to be honest. Uh, Attorney Lane, does, does that seem to be an issue?
I'm so sorry. Could you repeat that?
Jeff, I'll let you take it.
Um. Again, on the submitted survey.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the survey up.
Calls for the setting of. Um, monuments at the corners of the new property boundary, which coincides closely with the area where the new parking is going to be and the additional drainage feature. And this is just kind of a belt and suspenders thing where we'd like to have those set before construction starts. So that we can all be on the same page that the area being built is what it's showing up like.
So basically saying you're going to mark the fill-out line and put markers up.
Yeah, set markers first, then write. Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, so I'm going to assume that that's amenable?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, B, the number of gravel parking spaces in the one acre gravel parking area shall be ninety-two and the number of gravel parking spaces in the point zero eight acre parking area shall be twenty.
That, that add up to sixteen, because there's a big, distinct additional ones.
That is an interesting question. Can we verify those?
Just, just for consistency, they're making a balance, maybe the ones that are already there in the baked area.
Sure, so you guys, we're gonna work it all out. I think. Sure, so yeah, we can reconcile that, it's, I think it was a difference between the narrative and counting out the, the spaces kind of sketch, so.
And we need to make sure they hit the one sixteen mark, and if they're accurate, that's something we can do on, yes.
Right, and then again, it's just the set of edge mark for what, you know.
Okay.
All right, so you'll take care of that. C, the patio should be built to no larger than three thousand one hundred and thirty-two square feet, it will contain a five foot planting area and is twenty feet from the parking area. D, the area of a storage container shall not exceed the space eliminated on said plans and the number of double deck stack containers shall be limited to two stacks for two containers. Do you have an out there seat clarification or?
Yeah. Make sure the double stacks are still safe.
Yeah, there was also an issue where, um, we didn't have a great note when we sent the last meeting, the audio was bad, so in my memory, um, Attorney Lane said there were only two stacks that had, uh, multiple containers, but it seems like that's not a perfect.
We discussed at this meeting too, that the entire run up to the second dash line could have double stacking. Uh, so I think we need to modify it, do we need to modify it, because it still says it shall be two stacks, two stacks for two containers, I don't know what that means.
So maybe clarify that to say it's.
Shall not be more than double stacked.
Not be set.
Yes, and I was clarified early on, but so, but one piece of clarity is, are you expecting the entire area, the mark on the plan, is eligible to?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, we just wanted clarity and I, I, so we can make that clear, that the entire row of storage containers could be too high and, and then there was a note that they shall be secure, assuming that any relevant, uh, messages go.
Yeah, because I think that's really important, okay. All right, so make that change, please. Let me set, one second. McColin, all right. The, uh, E, all stormwater infrastructure, including the trench drain along the western side property, new retention basin in the southeastern quarter of the property shall be built or extended and maintained in accordance with said plans and the accompanying narrative. Which is there? Two, we've gone through extensively, um, already. Feel like I need to reread those, we've covered them at some length. They agree. So let's go to three. Special events shall be held to the annual recurring events, marks and brews and half-mile fundraiser. All special events shall limit parking to seventeen seventy-six room company property, Burke Family Farm and strip of, and maybe the strip of grass along Fort Hill Road and the, and shall have brewery staff on hand to direct overflow parking to said locations. It was interesting to me, you said you're only having two, we don't want it to get out of hand, but I also kind of wonder, you know, some other marathon comes on sometimes, is it a terrible thing that they can't do, what do they have to do come before us for another special permit? Thoughts? Any more?
No. I think it's a bit forward, other than, you did, like, that specifically said there's a mechanism to, they have it right now, they, they exhibit good, um, compliance and like, as, as the marathon was this year, uh, like, it just goes off well and why?
I agree that that's the measure I've used, but how do we like?
Can they display our permits to the city?
And then I knew a special permit or like an event.
Well, I would say you put language in there, any additional that show, it's like these exist.
Like that, for that we need to, we need to put that in, because right now we're specific, saying we can only.
Well, I think we should say these are good, and if you want more, yeah, insert mechanism.
Which would be general.
Well, yeah, no, I, I appreciate the discussion, so the two things are that the city only very recently enacted a special events, um, permit. Um, up until this point recently, there had been none, uh, specifically kind of for how would parking be handled, um, hours of operation, whether the police fire, they have a cert team, which gets, um, triggered by a certain number of people, so there had been no formal process for that. So, um, I do think it's important that we, if we go back to the overarching use of the property, it's brewery, it is within this board's, you know, consideration of what, how many special events do you think are kind of normal to have in addition to the everyday operations? Um, so we can have that quick discussion and then I, I think a similar note that this, this shall not supersede any requirements, um, of permits issued for, of, for live entertainment, because the city has this new process, so they're going to have an actual robust review of operations at these things. And I just want to be clear that the planning board is not holding, um, holding this down if they have other requirements. One, one, for example, would be the cert team.
Yeah.
Being called out or, uh, sanding camp, quarter body, uh.
So definitely we'll need that, which, hundred percent on board with that, but I question, I, I think that we should put a number in that allows them to do more before having to come before us again to modify an actual special permit. For me, that number's four. Who has, four of us? Just random. It, it's, for me, the reason is because it doubles what they've got, so it gives them some breathing room, but then if they go beyond a certain number and it can impact no traffic to the neighbors, then they do have to come back, you know, and, and so I'm picking a number that kind of gives a little breathing room here in case something cool comes along, community really likes, but not so much that who gets on it. You're right, it's completely arbitrary. Everything I said was asking back here, it's for the argument.
I, I mean, I like the logic, it's good logic. I have no idea, Chris, but I'm going to, I, I think it makes sense to put some sort of flexibility, there may be a tourism that, that turns up, that they like to do that's, you know, their community benefit. Yeah. Permit.
Thoughts?
I, I just don't want to limit them to, yes, other breweries, the food truck Fridays, for in and building, like, every private, they do an annual, um, every year their anniversary party, the city does Mount Palm Trail Race, and like, it's not uncommon for them, getting to feel level with.
Yeah, I completely, so I don't want to cap them, but I don't want it to be excessive where they become a special event, uh, and company, which I don't think.
I think four is a logical middle ground, I do appreciate the discussion, as well, I, there are different zoning requirements in the location of the other breweries, just so, so just so you know that it's not totally arbitrary that you're regulating it this way, it's a, you know, the mill industrial district, um, was created with the ultimate flexibility for businesses to operate, and it's different than what we have in the industrial, the straight-up industrialism, so I think four, um, and then just a note that, to, you know, those, that shall not, this, this shall not supersede any requirements that, uh, requirements of permits issued for, for the, for the licensing board.
Does that sound good for everyone? Jeff?
Hey Jeff, I got a question about that, this is Eric from Ford Hillbury, regarding the future, um, noise ordinances.
Yep.
All right, so I guess there is talk, I guess, I guess the, uh, entertainment, I guess, uh, within the, um, I guess the liquor license, I guess they are proposing that, um, you, in order to do outdoor music, uh, that you are subject to a hundred dollar special permit. Uh, if that passes, would we be having to go get a special permit every single time uh, we want to do outdoor music?
Uh, my understanding so far is it's a yes, but, and then it's yes, but you could apply one time for your summer schedule.
All right, is, is it, you see, that's where, that's sort of a problem for us, because we're going to be spending, you know, twenty thousand dollars in order to have, um, you know, make all these, um, you know, adjustments to minimize sound, and now we're going to have to go in front of the planning board again and, 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 and spend a hundred dollars to get, um, this, so I think that we have to address this, um, otherwise.
It's not something this board would, you'd have to go before the licensing board, right, that's.
Right, but, but as our current permit stands, uh, and this was, this was spoken with Lindsay Mailer, that we would, that we would, um, we would not have to do this as our, as our current permit stands. Um, so ultimately, I think, I hate to say, but this is kind of a deal breaker, because every single time we play music outdoors, you'd be charging us a hundred dollars, that'd be four hundred dollars a, a week.
In our findings, we stated, and I'm going to try and say it again here real quick, we stated that we were permitting live music.
So, yeah, the, and I, the board hasn't liked this analogy before, but we are creating a box, a big box for you to operate within, and then if you need to get a license from the licensing board that's outside of this process, I do, Eric, I am not a hundred percent involved in that process, actually, I am like very minimally involved in that process, but my understanding is that you would go in for one application with the licensing board for your entire summer schedule, so you're not, this is not a hundred dollars per evening that you have music, this is one permit that you would get to operate over live, it's an annual, it's like, it is an annual life.
It's a good.
Well, given that, given that there's uncertainty, before we, uh, agree on this, I think that, I mean, because I've heard, I've heard a lot of different things from Sam Devil, I've heard a lot of different things from the town, I've heard different things from Lindsay Mailer, this is a very important issue, and I think that we have to.
Eric, it is not helpful, please stop. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Please stop, just stop. I'll call you, and, and listen, I really respect you raising a good point, uh, Mr. Burson, but that's something to go before the licensing board, not for us.
But it's about to change.
Okay, that, you know, that's something that you'll have to work with the licensing board on, and again, it wouldn't be something that comes before us, but I hope I said that as clearly as I could. All right. I'm going to go forward now. Uh, so when modifying special events to be four and not, um, overlap existing requirements that will exist in, I could get exactly the word you said. Yes, what was it?
The season. Shall not supersede.
Shall not supersede. What?
Uh, requirements for permits issued for live entertainment.
Okay. That's good with everyone? Okay. Number four, a lighting picture shall be built according to the photometric plan submitted by Berkshire Design Group dated May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. That works for me. Number five, snow removal will take place according to the plan developed by engineer Swanson dated May eleventh, twenty twenty-two. We've seen that, we've seen the places where they're putting them, that works for me, but. And lastly, all other relevant conditions of the two thousand seventeen special permit remain in effect, and we talked about that being important for the, some of the stuff that was passed, maybe like the, the road, which we were.
And it's just the two thousand seventeen, or is there also a two thousand fifteen that we should reference as well?
Thoughts?
Or does that? My understanding of the way that it functioned was that the two thousand seventeen permit became the controlling permit.
Okay.
And so we were just trying to, there are, there's a few, there's a few minimal conditions that are relevant from the point seventeen permit, they're still, good to have.
Okay, thanks. Well, that is all of our findings and all of our conditions, does anyone think there's any additional conditions or any concerns they have at this point on the board?
So may I, may I, I do want to address the question that, um, Eric raised, if there, after this process, we've been in this process for over a year and, um, we've all done the best we can to get to this point, and I think it's a good point to be at, if there is a discrepancy that arises between a licensing requirement and this permit, the applicant can come to the board at a public meeting and discuss it, whether it's a significant change or not. So I, I do, there will be a mechanism to deal with the discrepancy, but as of right now, you know, there's, there's two paths that, uh, a person suing live music is going to have to go through, which is the zoning path, which we're on now, and the licensing path. Like I said before, other, the other locations are, by their zoning, by their zoning are a little bit more permissive, so, but I would offer the applicant, if there's a discrepancy that arises in the two, there should be a mechanism to at least get them for the board here to determine what the discrepancy is and how dangerous or minor, but I just want to offer that.
Are you suggesting language can be put in to accommodate that?
Um, it's generally assumed to be that, to be that way, uh, we can add, I mean, we can add a condition, but it's, um.
In no way do I intend to supersede what the licensing board is doing.
The licensing board will be aware of this permit and they'll use it as the basis, so I, I do understand what, uh, Eric might be questioning is the sound mitigation level, but I think what we want to determine is that this has been pretty well embedded in terms of that being the, the method. Um, so I, I would just go, I guess if, if there are discrepancies between the special permit and the licensing board, and if there's a, a review by the planning board, that's always.
So it's implicit?
It's implicit because if there's a substantial change to the plan, if there's a plan, if there's a change to the way this operates, the applicant has the first option is to come to the board and discuss it, to determine whether it's a minor change or major change, and go over there. Aaron, that's.
All right, hopefully that's helpful. All right, so anything else?
I make a motion to approve the special permit under section four point seven of the East Town Council ordinance to expand the public operations at Porto Brewery, but the conditions discussed are amended to most.
Is there a second?
No second.
No, ten seconds? All right, all in favor? I. Any against? Any extensions? It's unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, it's been a long process, thanks to everyone that, that rode through this with us for a year or so. With regard to, um, the information that needs to go to the applicant and time that they're not, sign plans or anything here, what's the, what, what's the process for them next?
But, before the people leave who are in the audience, there will be a post start in the mail, uh, which indicates that you do have a twenty day deal period, uh, which for every special permit, but the prep work that we've done here, um, I think that we could have this decision for you to sign by the end of the week, um, that gets filed with the town clerk and then the city clerk, and then that, um, allows that twenty day deal period to start. And after that, um, twenty day deal period ends, then, um, you know, in theory, uh, the, the work could start if it's ready, since the monuments are set, um, the band shelf gets signed, it gets a building permit, uh, and, and, you know, the site improvements are the things that the neighbors would expect to see out there happening, uh, so, and I guess that's, that's the summary.
Right. Well, not that the applicant have, they get, say, they're going to throw it here or anything in place, you have six months, you have a year, nine months, I mean, what was the timeline here?
Sorry, that was the last two years, right?
He's trying to have a couple reflectors down here, when, when can that possibly be done, I mean, is that going to be six months, next week, a year?
I think we can talk to the applicant, and my understanding of the applicant would be that that's not going to be a problem to get, uh, insulated quickly, um, just as a discussion piece, but, uh, you know, if the band shelf never, um, gets created, um, then the condition that limits them to solo or just stay, uh, in vacation is in place for a while, so that's sort of the incentive, um, to have the band shelf constructed, the rest of the site work could come in for the two years. But that happens.
That was our last item on the agenda, thank you very much, appreciate it. Um, and does any, do you have any administrative announcements, or does anyone have any announcements?
There's vacuum store, I see a empty panel. There, that status order, yeah, that, well, it's your vacuum store, I didn't even ask and they said next week, they've said next week a few times, but yeah, the demolition permit been issued.
I spoke with him a week ago and he said next week.
Yay.
Fortunately we're adjourned. Is there a second? All in favor? I, I, thank you very much, everyone, have a good night. Thank you.